Good evening, everyone. This is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021, and I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask the City Clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Gold?
Present.
Commissioner Guess?
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. Okay, before I ask Commissioner Henderson to say the invocation, say a prayer, some of you may have seen today where here in McCracken County, we passed 100 deaths due to COVID. And so I'd like to just take a moment of silence and remember all of those folks here locally, our friends, neighbors, family that have lost their lives. Mr. Henderson, would you do the invocation for us, please?
Our Father and our God, again, we are in your presence, and we thank you so much for the opportunity and for the privilege to lay our heads on your heart. God, we know that you are indeed sovereign, you're mighty, you're awesome. Even in the midst of a pandemic, Lord God, you're still trustworthy. And we do lift up the families of those who have lost loved ones during this difficult, difficult time. And we thank you, Lord God, that a vaccine has come, and we are getting close to getting our people vaccinated. Father, we come now lifting up Mayor Bray, and we lift up Commissioner Wilson, we lift up Commissioner God, we lift up Commissioner Guess, we lift up Brother Jim Art and the entire staff. And we pray, Lord God, that you would bless our families, that you would keep us in the hollow of your hands. We pray, oh God, that you would bless our service, all that we do tonight, all of our deliberations, all of our discussions. God, we pray that you would be in the midst of it all, guiding our thoughts and guiding our understanding. And it is in the mighty name of Jesus the Christ we pray, and we thank you now for everything. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Please stand with us as we say the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into any additions or deletions to the consent agenda, I've got just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, thought I'd go ahead and announce it now, we're going to go back to, at least in March, face-to-face meetings for the City Commission. We're going to do that for the month of March, at least, without inviting guests into the chambers. So we're going to, we'll have, the Commission will be there along with some of the staff, some of the, the press, of course, will be invited. And then we'll kind of see how that goes. And when we're ready to invite guests, we will do that. But I don't think we're quite ready for that at the first meeting in March. So we have, as everybody knows, that we've got, we've got the Plexiglas shields installed in chambers. And so it'll take us a little bit of time to just get our feet on the ground doing that. I know Commissioner Wilson, I believe you had at least one meeting with it that way. But so that's on the agenda. I wanted to call out our customer experience department led by Lindsay Parish. We've been calling citizens and helping the Health Department register our citizens for vaccines. And I think that's done, I think that's gone very, very well. And we've had a lot of our people in the city answer the bell to want to help that effort. And I'm really proud of that effort. And I just wanted to call that out, you know, as we get the meeting started tonight. And then finally, we had a couple of deaths this week in the community that I just wanted to, many of you may have known, Pat Brockenborough, Ms. Brockenborough, she was Ed Paxton's daughter. She was a philanthropist. She worked at the Paducah Sun. She was active in, you know, really active up until the last couple of weeks. I saw her out just a couple of weeks ago. She was a very hardy lady. And she will be, she will be missed in this community. And then Frances Hamilton, BA Hamilton's wife, BA had passed away a couple of years ago. Frances just passed away this week. I attended her funeral today earlier at Lone Oak Church of Christ. It was first funeral that I've actually been to since COVID. So it was a little unusual, but these were two, I'll just call it out, these were two matriarchs in our community, really, is the way I see this. And so we all, we all send our sympathies to their families, and may they rest in peace. So City Manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, no additions or deletions.
Okay, great. So items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member soul requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Would, the City Clerk will then read these items that are recommended for approval. Would any Commissioner liken an item removed for separate discussion tonight? Then I will ask the City Clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Approve minutes for the February 5th, February 6th, and February 9th, 2021 Board of Commissioners meetings. Reappointment of Robert Elway to the Civil Service Commission. Said term shall expire December 9th, 2023. Appointment of Darryl P. to the Electric Plant Board to replace the late Aldous Jones Jr. Said term shall expire February 6th, 2025. Reappointment of Aness Rivers Hutchins to the Code Enforcement Board. Said term shall expire February 26th, 2024. Personnel actions. A municipal order authorizing the application for and acceptance of an FY 2022 Highway Safety Grant through the Kentucky Transportation Amendment for overtime pay for officers and associated fuel costs for the Police Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a grant application and all documents necessary through the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for a fire prevention and safety matching grant in an amount of $12,000 for the Paducah Fire Department. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the agreement with Tyler Technologies for the license and software and the procurement of related products and services.
So moved. Second.
A City Clerk call roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So now we'll turn to municipal orders. City Clerk, will you start with the first one?
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order accepting the donation of real property located at 540 Locust Drive to the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute a consideration certificate in the deed of conveyance per se.
Maybe, maybe, Steve, do you mind, this is the first time this Commission has experienced this, where donation of property. And I was actually asking the City Clerk before the meeting, you know, kind of what the process was when that happened. So maybe you could walk us through that? Might be educational for us.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Commissioners. This is a process that we go through quite frequently. The two properties that we have tonight, one is from a burnout that resulted there on South 6th. That property, we had to do an emergency demolition on the property. The former, the property owner was deceased, and the children of the property owner were unable to do anything with the property. So rather than us leaning the property and then trying to foreclose on the property to recover any losses that we have from actions that we took, they were willing to donate the property to us. We do a title search at that time to make sure there's nothing owed on the property other than what we are concerned with, or if it's negligible for us to accept the property. And that gives us opportunity to go ahead and take that property and to turn it over to get some kind of redevelopment done with it. The second property on 521 Locust is an elderly couple that owns the property, is unable to care for the property any longer. Same situation would go through, a title search on the property, and to ensure that what we would be accepting is not going to put any undue obligations on the city. And we'll accept that property and with the hopes of being able to turn it over to someone that can either redevelop it or wants to own it and as a result, we give property taxes on it.
Okay, any, any questions from any of the Commissioners?
We later determine, the planning and zoning later determines what will happen to that property. Like the first property on Locust, the property was demolished. So what happens after that? What's the process of seeing what we do? Do we build another house? Do, you know?
Well, it goes on the city municipal property list, and it goes under planning and zoning's control at that time. And until something is done with it, the Fire Prevention Division does make sure that city municipal lots are mowed and maintained. So, and until that time, planning and zoning has some kind of idea of what to do with the property or gets transferred to another property owner.
Okay. So it's a great, great question, Commissioner Henderson, because, you know, the idea would be, you know, that somebody would come in and purchase the property and do something of value that would increase the value of the property, the neighborhood, depending on whether it's residential or commercial. And I think it's, you know, I mean, I think, my understanding is we have a pretty large inventory of vacant properties. And so we're looking for people, you know, to come in and do positive things with that. Right, City Manager? I mean, am I articulating that correctly?
You are 100% spot on, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly right. We do have a surplus of city-owned property. We do our best to auction off what we have, make sure that we get those properties into the hands of interested property owners for redevelopment purposes. We also try to work with neighboring property owners that might want to expand their lots, that type of thing, somebody who's adjacent to those properties who want to take over the ownership of those properties for maintenance purposes. But you're right on the money. We have a lot of available lots that are city-owned that are just primed for redevelopment.
About 116 right now, Mayor.
116?
That's correct.
And how do we determine the price of the, when we go to resell them? Or, I mean, is that kind of a decision each, each time a piece of property comes up? Or do we have them, do we have them priced now? I mean, how do we go about that?
Really, we, some of those lots, we bid them out. About every six months, we bid out lots. So basically, it's a bid, it's a bid, a sealed bid type of thing. But also planning, and we have Katie Axton here, works with some of those property owners as well to figure out, you know, what that negotiated price might be. Katie, you want to add to that? Katie?
Of course. So yes, as the City Manager was saying, depending on the parcel and any kind of neighborhood revitalization plans that are in place, we have different processes for the disposition of that property. So for the two that Chief Kyle just described, those would go through a standard public bid process where if somebody is interested in procuring that and building a home, we do public noticing, they give us their best price, and we go through a review process and eventually dispose of it with City Commission approval. Other parcels may be under a neighborhood revitalization plan where we work with the community to landbank those parcels and do redevelopment projects on a larger scale. That's Lower Town Neighborhood Association and Fountain Avenue are the two, the two projects that we've done like that here in Paducah.
So those who purchase the properties, do they have a certain amount of time to build something there?
That's correct. As part of the bid process, Commissioner Henderson, they give us a development proposal. And so that's, you know, what are you going to do with the property? Are you going to build a house? Are you going to build a garage or expand your garden? And then a timeline. And then those conditions are built into the deed as part of the transfer of the parcel.
Thank you. Here's a, here's a question. Do we follow back up in those situations? Do we have the means or the bandwidth to really manage that over the long run when we, you know, either write it into the, I guess that's what we do, is we write it into the deed, Katie? Is that, that's what you're saying?
That's correct. And they are, they remain active projects for the planning department until there's a closeout. When there's a closeout, we do a certificate of completion, and then that's also recorded with the property.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other questions? I think we're going, we're going to need a motion on this 540 Locust Drive.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
City Clerk, call roll, please.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So we've got another, that was, that was 540 Locust Drive. We've got another one. City Clerk?
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, municipal order accepting the donation of real property located at 1246 South 6th Street to the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute a consideration certificate in the deed of conveyance per se.
So moved. Second.
City Clerk, you can call roll, I believe.
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, Item C is, is the Safer Grant. And City Clerk, would you read that one, please?
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for an FY 2020 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant funded through the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA in the amount of $835,754.13 for the hiring of three firefighters.
So moved. Second.
Question?
Yes, yes, sir.
After that 36 months, who's responsible then for the salaries? Would the city just kick in for that, or what?
Commissioner, the city is fully responsible for those salaries at the end of that 36 months.
Okay.
But also, Steve, or Chief Kyle, sorry, there's no obligation, we're not under obligation. I mean, we can, we can manage through that process depending on what is actually going on at that time.
That is correct. There's, there's no obligation beyond the end of the grant. However, obviously, we'd like to see those personnel, that number of personnel in the department stay on. This grant is for a three-year period where the salaries are fully paid with the exception of any COLAs. And this increases our ability to put fully trained staff on to meet industry standards in each of our responses. It also reduces the probability of injuries on the fire ground with our personnel, from personnel trying to do too many tasks while they're operating on the fire ground. So it's, it's our hope that our community will see good benefit from this and is a step towards helping us strive to meet the standard.
And Steve, as you and I've discussed, you know, when we were together, I mean, I think, you know, I think that gives us time, buys us some time to really, you know, take, you know, we've got, you know, we've got fire facilities, you know, that, that, that need upgrading, that we need to address. And, and so we just, that gives us, that buys us time to really take a really close look at what we're doing with, with everything there, I think.
It does, Mayor. And the needs of the Fire Department are really not any different than any other departments that we have throughout the city. The needs are many. Facilities are an aspect, personnel is an aspect. And, and I'm very thankful to say fleet is not an aspect. We have a great program that supports that. And anytime I get the opportunity to say that, I always take it. It's a wonderful program that supports our fleet operation day in, day out on an annual basis. So those other two areas are very critical in, in areas that need to be improved.
Rome wasn't built in a day, but this is a start.
That's exactly right, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion from anyone? Questions? City Clerk, would you call roll?
Commissioner Gold?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, City Clerk, would you read the next one?
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing a contract between Esri and the City of Paducah on behalf of the members of the MAP GIS Consortium for a multi-jurisdictional enterprise license agreement.
So moved. Second.
So, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
You want to give us the 411 on this?
Absolutely. Thanks for having me tonight, Mayor, Commissioners, especially for you guys that have not dealt with this before. I'll try to give you a good, quick understanding of what we're doing and what we hope to achieve with this money. You know, right off the bat, you see a bunch of acronyms that might not mean much to you. You know, you've got MAP GIS, Esri GIS coming at you quick and fast. And basically, what we're asking for is continued funding for the software that we use in our everyday operations, not only in the city, but also in our GIS consortium partners. We are part of a GIS consortium, and GIS stands for Geographic Information Systems. And we're one of a handful in the state that have a multi-jurisdictional consortium set up. And our members include the City of Paducah, McCracken County, Joint Sewer Agency, Paducah Water, 911, and Paducah Power. And what that has allowed us to do is to pool our resources so that we can get a discount by becoming what is known now. You know, whenever we first set this up, it was called an enterprise license agreement. And our paperwork is old enough, it still says that. But we're an enterprise partner. And what that allows us to do is buy the software at a substantial discount. Since its inception, the first year that we started the enterprise agreement, we've averaged savings of probably close to $90,000 to $100,000 a year in what we would normally spend individually on the software licenses. And it's grown and adapted as we've gone forward. When we first started doing this, it really only covered the desktop software that we use. So it covered the server software that hosted our layers, but it also covered the desktop software that each individual entity used and has now evolved and grown to include web presence, you know, online mapping, online layers, mobile data collection with your phone. You know, that's one of the things that is really cool is, you know, we can take our phones out into the field, collect data, any of our partners can do the same. And it saves it back to the server in real time so that we can, we can add to our data collection. If you've ever been to our website, you'll see many, many places where it's referenced that you can go see the maps and you can go see the MAP GIS collection. And that is the central kind of repository where we keep, we probably keep about close to 300 layers that we keep up with. And that ranges from address points and center lines and parcel data and, you know, deed data across the county to streams and hydrology and Um, to streams and hydrology and, and, and features. Go ahead.
Let me just, just interject a question if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
In layman's terms?
Yes.
For people who may be watching this or watch it later, you know, I mean, how do we use the GIS on a day-to-day basis?
That's a great question, Mayor. So one of the things that people ask us, you know, is how does, how do I see it every day? And, and the truth is, if you've ever used a map, you're using GIS, you know, nowadays. It's just a smart map. And for us. Uh, just to give you a breakdown of what we use it for, um, and I, and I can just pick any department and tell you how it's used, you know, in planning. Um, they keep up with the planning and zoning layers so that they can see how certain blocks are zoned. How they are uh in the comprehensive plan, how they are in the future land use plan, what the future um transitions will be whenever they have a new map. Uh, that's in the planning department. In the engineering department, they keep track of uh stormwater events. They keep track of impervious surfaces. They keep track of. Uh, flood zones, all those things that help them make decisions on a day-to-day basis. We also are the administrators of the nine-one-one data. So all this, all the data that the nine-one-one dispatch center uses. Uh, whenever they, whenever you make that call, whenever you call nine-one-one and they, you know, they come up with nine-one-one, what's your emergency? As you're making that call in real time, there's a map pulling up with your data, with your address, where you probably should be, even if you're on a cell phone, it's doing a triangulation to figure out where you're at. If you've had prior calls in the past, if something has happened in that area, that GIS data is back behind it to come forward and, and inform them, hey. You know, you've been here before. Let me give you a little bit more information to pass on to this first responder so that they have some more data to go on while they're out there. Um, that's another one. Paducah Power, you know, they're one of our, our big consortium partners. They use uh, uh. All of the same data that we use and in addition to that, they're mapping all their utilities. They can see where they've got weak areas. They can see where they've got closed loops. They can see uh any new projects they've got going on. They can do long-range planning. Same with JSA. They do the same thing. They can see pressures. Uh, all of that data that rides in the background, if it has some sort of spatial element to it, we probably track it in the GIS somewhere. So that everyday citizens, whether they know it or not, when they call city hall and they need a, a, a question answered. A lot of times, one of the first things we'll do is pull up the map, see where they're at, see what data is related to that map. And whether or not we've got any historic data behind it that can inform the question. And so we've got. We've got reams of data that we can go through very quickly so that we can formulate answers for these uh citizens and, and get them the answers they need. And that's another thing I'm glad you brought up. Is if any citizens call down here, we made the decision years ago to give the data away. So. As long as it's maintained by the consortium, we will give it to any of the citizens that ask for it, whether that's aerial data. Um, LIDAR data, point data. The only thing we won't give them is the property owner uh information because we do have an agreement with the PBA. But. And on, you know, that's a great timing question, too. Just today, the PBA uh delivered me the December two thousand twenty imagery. That they just had flown and we put it on the web map today on the general map. So that background is now imagery that's only three months old. So that's, that's huge. We've, we've got a great partnership with them. And, and the ones that benefit in the long run are the citizens. You know, that's something that they get to use um for free. It's, it's one of those that everybody says is the best kept secret, but for the people that know about it, um, they use it extensively and they call all the time and we're happy to help them. So those are, those are great questions.
Yeah, I know that, uh, you know, in some of my discussions with Rick Murphy about stormwater events and specific properties. You know, in floodplains and I know we've used it, but I really didn't know, uh, you know, what the origin of it was.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, that's another great question is a lot of people don't know that um we're, we're kind of unique and that we have this consortium. And we actually have, I've sat on a couple of panels um at the state level, um, where, where people want to start consortiums. They want to get into these types of uh. Uh, um, agreements with their municipalities and their utilities. I'm a past president of the Kentucky Association of Mapping Professionals, so. Paducah tries to stay heavily involved and, and make sure that we're, we're staying ahead of the curve and we've done a very good job of that and, and. We get lots of compliments from, from other systems. You know, they say, hey, what are you doing? Um, you know, can you help us out? And, and we're happy to help, you know, whenever we've got the time, we, we cooperate fully and, and you know, it's. Uh, it's never a bad thing because eventually you're going to need them too and they'll have something that they may be working on that you can get from them. So. It, it's been a great uh, great journey and, and I only see, you know, bigger and better things. And, and that's what this does. It just continues that. That uh work that we've been doing and, and solidifies it for another three years.
So my final question is, this two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars does, is this all city or do it, do our partners participate in that? I mean?
Correct. Um, in the packet and, and that's a great question because the, the folks at home can't see this, but uh. Uh, the city only participates or only um puts in a certain percentage of that. It's broken down between. All of the different entities and if you look in the packet, you'll see that our, our um portion is just under twenty thousand dollars of, per year. And so there's a, a three-year commitment and, and we pay that every year and so do the other partners. And we actually have um payments set up. With recurring yearly reminders so that everybody has their payments already made, you know, into the account, ready to go whenever it's time to re-up the licenses. So the. Money is already there in the licensing account, ready to go.
It looks like our portion is just a little over seventeen thousand.
Correct, sir. That's correct. And that, that does requ- uh, reflect a small percentage increase. Just to full transparency. Uh, the first year that we signed our first three-year agreement, which was nine years ago, uh, the pricing was fifty thousand per year. And then it went up in two thousand eleven to sixty thousand and, and this year was uh the last. Uh, year that we have gotten a new contract. It went up another ten thousand. And that's reflective, of course. Of the wholesale price of the software that we buy and the bandwidth we use for the uh online storage and the online accounts that we get. So we. We get way more bang for our buck than, than we would if we had to buy all this stuff individually.
Okay, that's all, all anybody ever wanted to know about GIS.
Yeah, I, I, oh, I had maps ready to go, but man, we could, we could get way deep. We could get way deep. You know, we've got historic maps from nineteen hundreds and.
I'm not gonna let you, I'm not gonna let you go.
Well, I appreciate you, I appreciate you asking those questions because I think uh it's, it's good to inform everybody that, you know, those resources are out there and. And if they go to our webpage, they can go right into it and give us a call and we'll, we'll help them out.
It, it is amazing, you know, when I've gotten, gotten on some of these maps and seen some of the areas, it's amazing the. You know, the detail and what you've got there. So it's uh definitely a, a resource. So uh, any other questions from? Uh, any commissioners?
No.
Okay, do we, do we, do we get a motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry. City manager, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna turn uh now to uh the adoption of a couple of ordinances. Now. Just to remind uh anybody watching out there, you know, we, we previously read these, uh, we previously introduced these ordinances. So tonight, we're um, uh, we're actually going to adopt them. And uh, the first one is our concrete program. And um, city clerk, would you um, would you read that one for us?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance accepting the bid of Harper Construction LLC for the City of Paducah's twenty-twenty-one. Through twenty-twenty-two concrete program and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract per se. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the city accepts the bid of Harper Construction LLC for concrete work at the unit prices and hourly rates. For the calendar years twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two with the option of a one-year extension and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for the following prices. Curb and gutter, remove and construct, twenty-three dollars per linear foot. Curb and gutter adjacent to roadside edge, seventeen fifty. Per linear foot. Curb and gutter, new construction, fourteen ninety-nine per linear foot. Concrete sidewalk, remove and construct, thirty-seven dollars per square yard. Concrete sidewalk, new construction, thirty dollars per square yard. Concrete handicap ramp, sixty-five dollars per square yard. Concrete in, entrance pavement, six inches residential, fifty-eight dollars per square yard. Concrete entrance pavement, eight inches commercial, sixty-four dollars per square yard. Concrete entrance pavement, six inches M mix, sixty-five dollars per square yard. Concrete, concrete entrance pavement, eight inch M mix. Seventy-one dollars per square yard. Granite curb reset with new gutter, with new concrete gutter, thirty dollars per linear foot. Got a replacement granite concrete curb in place, twenty dollars per linear foot. Concrete header curb, twelve inches, fourteen dollars per linear foot. Concrete header curb, eighteen inches, fifteen dollars per linear foot. Non-reinforced concrete, eight inches, fifty-two dollars per square yard. Inlet repair, existing, six hundred dollars each reinforced concrete, new construction, class A, seven hundred dollars per cubic yard. Deep cut, deep soft cut, thirty dollars per linear foot. Preparated pipe, four inches, five dollars per linear foot. Track hoe, one hundred dollars per hour. Backhoe, eighty dollars per hour. Compactor roller, seventy dollars per hour. Dump truck, ninety dollars per hour. Backhoe with breakers, ninety dollars per hour. Small dows are ninety dollars per hour and labor, thirty-five dollars per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we previously talked about this last week. Does anyone have any additional questions? City clerk, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, uh, city clerk, would you read the next uh ordinance?
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement. With Commonwealth Economic Partners LLC for consulting services related to the tax increment financing TIP program. For the Paducah Riverfront Development Project. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Commonwealth Economics Partners LLC. For services related to the tax increment financing program. This agreement authorizes the expenditure of a flat fee of four thousand dollars per month. During the period of time related to the state TIP approval process, the fee shall change to a flat fee of one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per month after the completion of the approval process. And before the city block construction phase, the flat fee shall then change to a flat fee of three thousand five hundred dollars per month during the city block construction phase. Further, this ordinance authorizes the payment of all outstanding balances due and payable to Commonwealth Economic Partners LLC. This agreement shall continue until notification of cancellation by either party.
So moved.
Second.
We talked, we also talked about this uh at the last meeting, um, and I think we talked about uh the flexibility around the, the fee, when the fees changed. Um, I'm, I'm satisfied with that. Um, just want to make sure nobody else has got any questions. Okay, city clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
So, uh, item number five is the introduction of uh one ordinance tonight. Um, city clerk, why don't you, uh, why don't you read that for us?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled. An ordinance amending chapter fifty, article three, stormwater conveyance and management of the code of ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance is being enacted pursuant to mandates imposed by the Federal Clean Water Act. The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System and the Kentucky Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. In particular, those parts that require local governments to comply with water pollution control requirements. This ordinance amends the Paducah Code of Ordinances, chapter fifty, article three, stormwater conveyance and management. To come into compliance with the post-construction runoff control requirements of the Kentucky Division of Water pursuant to the Clean Water Act.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Murphy.
Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, city manager, you recall with, that we had a presentation uh, uh, given to us by Strand and Associates. Uh, of whom has been our uh stormwater consultant for some time. Uh, they uh basically briefed you on what the purpose of these ordinances are. And what you have before you are the ordinances that are amended uh based on what the KPDS permit or Kentucky. Uh, pollution discharge elimination permit requires that we have in our ordinances for that. It will further require that we have some form of policing action and/or keeping up with this because we're actually putting things in place that says that. We're gonna go out and monitor things that are out there in the field to satisfy our compliance with uh the national uh, uh, well, the Clean Water Act. But this, this puts those things in place that legally gives us the right to do these things.
And, and is there, Rick, is there? Silly question, is there a cost to this?
Yes, Mayor, there is a, an overall cost to this. It's manpower or people power.
Okay.
Because right now we're not currently staffed to execute the requirements that are in the ordinance.
Have we estimated what that, do we, do we have a feel for what that would be?
Well, we have a frozen position that is our storm, uh, well, we had a frozen position. It was a stormwater. Uh, engineer, but we changed that title to assistant city engineer and that's the position that's currently frozen. Plus, we would need an inspector to go out and, and do some work as well. So these are, these are some things that are in flux.
So we need to fill one of the open positions and hire another full-time person or is that gonna be part-time?
If we're, no, we'll need to, we'll need to hire a full-time, but two full-time people. One would be the stormwater engineer, but then. As we start managing our system, cleaning our system, we're gonna have somebody that needs to keep up with those contracts. Just like, for example, you need somebody that we have in place now that keeps up with all of our paving. So if that's Brandy Topper, she keeps up with all of that inventory. You're gonna need another person to keep up with that other inventory. But we have currently uh managed our, our current positions based on the hiring freezes that are in place and some of this, some of this work is not getting done.
Yep. When does that work commence?
As far as, as far as when, when we have, we're actually supposed to be executing as we speak.
Okay. And when do we get done if we don't do it?
When do we get, say that again, please?
When do we get our hands slapped? When we, in other words?
Okay.
Around getting started with this?
Uh, if we were to have an audit today, if, for example, region four that comes out of Atlanta and/or if the Kentucky Division of Water came in and audited us today, they would ask us to produce our paperwork where we've been out doing this work. And we would not be in a very good position to produce that paperwork. And then therefore we would be in violation of our requirements. Uh, which they could impose fines on us for not doing what we are charged to do through the federal and state government.
Okay, that exhausts my questions. Anyone else? Okay, I think we're uh, we're ready to move to um item number five. Thank, thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it very much. Um. And um, I know our assistant city manager, Michelle's on and uh we're gonna let her talk in just a second, but I'll just, I'll just say this before she kicks off. You know, we had a. Uh, you know, we had a really productive uh strategic, strategic planning session. Uh, two or three Saturdays ago, Friday afternoon, Saturday. Uh, Friday afternoon, the depart- uh, department heads, uh, directors were with us. Uh, and presented their um, uh, their ideas for improvements. Uh, we then got together. Um, by ourselves on Saturday morning and uh had a very robust discussion about. About where we're going and, and um, and so out of that came a document. Um, uh, where we um, uh, we tried to capture, I think, Michelle, you tried to capture exactly what our thoughts were. And uh, so at that, at this point, I'll turn it over to you. I don't want to steal any of your thunder.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bray. Um, I am excited to bring the initial draft of the strategic plan back to you. As you mentioned, uh, these are essentially the twelve items. That's what we're going to focus on tonight are the twelve items that rose to the highest priority for the board. And uh, what the city manager and city clerk and I have done is we've taken that discussion and really tried to break them into actionable items. Over the next one to two years. So really the feedback we need tonight is do the expectations that we've drafted. Uh, meet this board's expectations of your goals and vision for the community and what you've set for us to do. And do you have alignment there? So the next steps after that, because then we'll move towards the adoption and get really into the implementation. So we're really looking for feedback to make sure that we have accurately captured. Uh, the goals of this board. So um, city manager, Art, would you like to add anything before we get started?
Uh, no, I, I just, I guess so, yes. Just making sure that uh there's something that you've believed that we've missed the mark on. Make sure you let us know that because now. Make sure you let us know that, because now would be the time we can, we can make those adjustments to the, the expectations or the outcomes. We just want to make sure we, we're hitting the mark, we're on target, just like we utilized the, the dartboard, you know, analogy during the process. Now we have the target defined, so just make sure we're on target. If not, we'll need to tweak it.
Okay.
Okay, so Stephen Chino, if you'll progress to the next slide. Essentially, we have taken the twelve items and created a slide for each of them, and we thought we could walk through one by one. So the first action item is the nine-one-one radio tower upgrades and operational funding item. We have set the objective to clearly establish a partnership with the county to create a sustainable revenue source that covers both operational funding and the infrastructure improvements. We've identified key team members, and then you can see the expectations there. And the way we've approached the expectations is we've tried to break it down into what would be done over the next one to two years, because these could be, you know, these projects are several years long. So in the next year or two, we want to educate the community and the elected officials, update the federal engineering study on the project cost, negotiate the inter-local agreement, you know, identify and implement a sustainable revenue source, and then consider, this is a project that the board had talked about that would potentially use the existing bond proceeds. So we've captured that as well.
Okay, so I'll, I'll kick off here a little bit, and then I would invite, you know, anybody that wants to weigh in. First of all, you know, I, I agree with ninety-nine percent of everything up here as far as where we are. I do think it's important to educate our current elected officials and the community on what the need is. I do think that creating a sustainable revenue source is critical. And one of the things for those, you know, who are not aware, you know, nine-one-one in the past has been funded by a fee in large part through the years that was on landline telephone bills. So everybody knows what's been, what's been going on with landlines. People have been eliminating them and they're, you know, most people are using cell phones. So that revenue source has dried up. And so I think one that's, one of the things that's really critical to this, to this effort is, is creating a sustainable revenue source. Now, previously, prior to COVID, the nine-one-one committee was, had met, and they had been kicking around some options on, on how to get that, recreate, I guess, that revenue source. No decisions have been made, and I think that's going to be one of the, one of the tougher parts of this, this exercise, this initiative. If you take that discussion, you go down to consider the utilization of the existing bond proceeds. You know, we did talk about that. We did talk about nine-one-one. The possibility of using some of those bond proceeds. But I think the bigger issue, you know, really is creating the sustainable revenue source over time. I've heard numbers out there from, anywhere from eight million to fourteen million dollars, you know, to, to upgrade, reinstall, replace, use any word that, that you want to come up with. You know, the nine-one-one system that we have, which is, which is outdated and in need of that. I think that we really need to be, I think we need to be really smart about the way we decide how much money we want to spend. So the county has reached out to us just in the last couple of days and has, in fact, I've got an email sitting with some possible dates where we're gonna, we're gonna have our first, our first meeting. So we are moving on this. It's going to take some time. But I think for the most part, you know, I want to hear from everybody else, but from my perspective, it, it captures, I, I think, the spirit of what we talked about.
Do you, do you want to move that, I think words are important when you do your strategic plan. So instead of being, going with identify and implement sustainable revenue source, do you want to use that? I, I see that word as a word of power, you know, create a sustainable revenue source. Do you want to change that to create?
Yeah, where, where are you talking about, Jim?
It says on that, that fourth bullet point, it says identify and implement sustainable revenue source. Do you want to change the identify and implement?
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah, absolutely. Unless, unless another commissioner disagrees with that. Commissioner Wilson, you?
Yeah, I think identify and implement really is the same as create. It's, when you say create, it's, there are different ways to do that. We're, we're going to look for a way to do it and then implement it. But e- either way, I think it says basically the same thing. We have to find a new, a funding source for it.
Commissioner Galt or Commissioner Henderson, do you have any, any additional input on this?
I'm cool with however we say it, create or implement. I think it does say the same thing.
But overall, the slide, you're good to go? With the line?
Mayor Bray, what was that one percent? Where's that, where were we missing the mark, that one percent there? What's not sitting right?
You know, I don't know, the, the existing bond proceeds, you know, I'm still, you know, the, the bond proceeds, and we're going to get into this discussion. But there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of need for those bond proceeds. And so I think, I think it's accurate, we're going to consider utilization of those bond proceeds. But, but what's more important to me is the revenue source. You just don't go out and spend X million dollars, use bond proceeds, buy a bunch of, you know, new equipment. You've got to, you've got to go through the pain of figuring out how we're going to pay for it in the long run. And depending on how we pay for it, we might, we might not need to utilize much of those bond proceeds. But I, but Jim, I, I do think it's, it's accurate, you know, consider.
Okay. Would you, would you prefer for us to change that to consider the utilization of a portion of the existing bond proceeds?
That would probably be more accurate. It's, it's wordsmithing, but yeah.
Yeah.
Michelle, are you good with everything?
Yes, I'm ready to move on if.
Let's ask the difficult question. Are we still aligned here as a board with this, this outcome, this objective and these expectations?
That's a good question. Commissioner Galt, are you with us?
I am, I am, and I'm perfectly fine with that. What I started to say earlier is, you know, the bond proceeds, it would almost, without creating a revenue stream, and this is a crude analogy, but it would be like purchasing a home without having a job or being able to pay your electric bill or any of the other things. So I, I don't know that we can have one without the other, regardless of whether we use the bond proceeds or not. It's just good fiscal responsibility to talk about creating a revenue stream because we no longer have one.
Yes.
That's well said, Commissioner Galt.
Very well. Thank you.
I think this is broad enough to cover everything that we're, we've been talking about for it.
I'm sorry?
I think this is broad enough that, to cover everything that we've been talking about.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we're all on the same page and, you know, I think it'll be fine.
Okay, all right, next.
So the next item is minority inclusion, and the objective is intentional minority inclusion in city employment committees and boards. We have a number of expectations here, including that Team Paducah is representative of the community's demographics. And we talked about handling this through attrition and inclusion-based hiring tactics. So we'll have to put a little bit of thought to what that looks like. We also want to make sure that the boards and commission are reflective of the community's demographics, that we identify and adopt citywide and departmental inclusion hiring strategies. We also want to look at citywide inclusion training for all departments and the Board of Commissioners. And Jim and I have a great trainer that we saw at a conference that we would like to bring to the city and, and does some training with other cities in our region. We also talked about the implementation of a multi-departmental inclusion team, which Jim has called the MIT. And we would look at, including team members from all levels of the organization to talk about inclusion in the organization. And then Mayor, we know that you have been working on the Diversity and Inclusion Council, so fully appointing and supporting that council.
Yeah.
Do we have a diversity statement as part of our HR policies and procedures?
Is Stephanie still on board?
Here.
I am here.
Stephanie, can you speak to that?
We have affirmative actions policies, which includes the equal employment opportunity. But as far as something specific to diversity and inclusion, I, I do not believe there is a policy related to that.
Would it not be a, a good move to actually make a policy specifically stating that as opposed to that broad statement that we already have? Would that not be wisdom?
I think it would be more intentional.
Yeah, right.
I think the key word is intentional. I mean, I think, and, and we've, we've talked about this. You know, big companies have all kinds of diversion and inclusion programs, training. You know, there's, there's, there's lots of things out there available. But I think it kind of starts with, you know, with a policy. So we could certainly, I don't know where, how we would add that, you know, to this, to this initiative. But I don't know if we'd cover that. Did we cover that specifically in these bullet points?
No, we don't. There's, there's tactics, tactics and strategies that can, can, can be a derivative from a policy. We can actually create a, you know, human resources policy to drive it. Yeah.
And I don't, you know, if that's something too, that that MIT team could assist with the development of that.
Well, and also the, the inclusion training. You know, we, we don't know, we don't know, and making sure we, we utilize that, the, the additional professional development to make sure we steer a good policy. But I think we could add that as an expectation.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we should have a formal policy.
Yeah, I agree. And you know, I'll just say this, I mean, you know, the city, our city is, is twenty-five percent, right, right, slightly below twenty-five percent African-American. And, you know, and I think, I think it's up to the city to lead in this particular area. And, you know, and Commissioner Wilson, I know that Dr. Reese, you know, has definite goals and objectives in, you know, for the chamber this year and, and some of these same areas. He and I have had some discussions, so I think it's a good time. It's a good time in, in Paducah's history to, to lead in this particular area. So, Stephanie, you know, you, you're going to have the commission's support in this, in this regard. So, you know, let us know how we can help or how we can be supportive. But I think, I think this, this, this outline's kind of where we are. And, and you're right, Michelle, I have been working on Diversity and Inclusion Council. I would report to the, to the, I guess, report to, I really wouldn't report to the mayor or report to the, to the entire commission. Or it would be an arm of the entire commission, I think is a better way to, to say that. And Commissioner Henderson has been helping me with that. And we have another meeting this coming Friday to discuss it further. And I've gotten input from Dr. Reese and some other folks in the community. So I think my goal was to get something kind of established by the, by the end of the first quarter. And I think we're, I think we're still on track with that.
As far as the, that board or the, the council there, Commissioner Henderson, I talked about that this morning. I think it was this morning, time flies, you're having fun, but you talked about how, is, what, what steps do we need to take to actually make that a formal board? You know, for the cities. And, and I was talking to him about that would require the passage of an ordinance to basically incorporate that board as a formal board. So do we, is that what your thoughts are, Mr. Mayor? This would be an actual official board of the city?
Well, I think we ought, we talk about it, but yes, I had, I had thought in that regard. You know, I think we all ought to discuss it. I don't want to create a board that, you know, that, you know, becomes, you know, that's, that's not conducive to getting done what we want to get done. I can't say it any other way. So I don't want to create a board that, you know, becomes something that is hard to manage through. So I could see us, you know, perhaps initially starting off more looser or more loose than that. But I'm, I'm open. I'm, I, I don't, I don't have a grand plan, excuse me, in that regard.
I think that the direction that this action item leads us will help drive the policy for the creation of a board or council regarding this area.
Let, let me, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
I was going to say, Mayor, you're talking that this is a community-wide council that you're appointing. So it would represent a lot of different areas.
Correct. And I'm still, you know, we're still defining the, the areas. I mean, we've got a really good first draft. And it includes a lot of different things, but I would envision this board, you know, meeting on a regular basis to talk about, when I say regular basis, I'm not sure if I'm talking about monthly or quarterly. That, really, to be honest, that, that has yet to be defined. So we're, we're still talking through that.
I, I would, I would think that if it becomes a function of the city, that it would probably operate just like every other commission and or board. They meet, they have five board members, they meet on a regular basis. And of course, they would report to or be accountable to the city commission. I wouldn't see them operating any other way than the way we operate now.
So how would you see this board interfacing with the Human Rights Commission? Commissioner Henderson?
Well, I think that they can come together and compare with, you know, the Human, the Human Rights Commission is going to basically be dealing with issues in areas where people have perhaps been treated unfairly in, in the workplace. And so I can see them collaborating with each other to possibly get some things done quicker in solving some of the cases that they will, they will encounter. So.
I mean, I would see them collaborating, but they're totally different missions.
Yeah, but, yeah, they're totally different, absolutely, I agree. But definitely they could collaborate with each other. I agree.
But these, these are questions that we need to answer. I mean, we need, we just need to flush out and make sure that, you know, we're thinking, thinking through this as we get, you know, the board adopted and appointed and that sort of thing. So we define the, the mission pretty well.
Can I throw this out at you? I know we have not discussed it, and perhaps we do need to discuss more. But one of the things that we often hear when we talk about minority inclusion or, and or minority hiring is that it always comes back that we could not find qualified applicants, okay? And that, and that very well can be true. But I guess my question would be is, as a city, as a city, what would we be willing to do? How far, how far would we be willing to go to offer incentives for people to apply for some of the positions that become available? Perhaps even relocate to Paducah to take on some of these responsibilities? What, what would we be willing to do to make that happen?
Well, I think. Well, I think, uh, you know, that would, if you're talking about specifically for city government, I mean, for the city of Paducah and hiring practices, you know, that's something that we would have to set out in a, in a strategy with Stephanie um, and it's our city manager and talk about that. And, and we do have a recruiting strategy now, but I'm, you know, Stephanie, I don't know if you want to speak to that. But, you know, we, we had a meeting earlier this week, actually, to talk about some of uh, our goals and aspirations for, you know, human resources in general. Not specific to diversity, but some of the goals that, that we want to have. And, and a lot of those, those goals and aspirations that we have for human resources um, are definitely kind of crossover, you know, into minority hiring and inclusion, you know, and some of that purposeful things that we're talking about. So I think we're gonna need, I mean, I just, from my standpoint, I see us needing to, you know, to talk through that and uh, dot our i's, cross our t's, you know, let people provide input and be thoughtful about the, the strategy that we set forth.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just think that some of our work and some of the team's work will be in vain if we don't change a few things as to how we engage folk.
Agreed.
Paducah. The, you know, I just think that we have to have, have something.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson, so is there a, a different expectation we need to add here that's not captured? Is there a one that you'd like to switch? Is there, is there, where, it seems like we might be missing the mark. How do we?
If we do anything, and I, I think, and and Michelle may have mentioned it earlier. I think that we would have to look and see what our hiring tactics look like. What, how do we hire? What do we, is that what we're, is that what you're referring to, Michelle? When you say hiring tactics, what do we do to, to, to hire folk? I would try to uh, perhaps outline that or flesh that out a little more.
Yes, you are correct. That would be a part of the um, uh, that inclusion-based hiring tactics. It's in two bullets there. So that would be part of, it would be an analysis of what we're doing and then how we can improve that and implement those tactics.
Yeah, I think that goes back to the conversation we had just with Mayor Bray and and Stephanie and Michelle, talking about our current uh, you know, uh, application software is convoluted and complicated. And how do we simplify that and make it more accessible?
And we decided to add us an official formal statement on to this expectation to?
The pol, the creation of the policy?
Yes, yeah.
I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
But I think, Mr. Arn, I think what you have here, what you all put together here is absolutely fine with the, us fleshing out the hiring tactics.
Okay.
And adding the policy uh, on the front end.
Commissioner Wilson keeps saying this, the diversity statement. Is that something in addition to the policy? Is that part of the policy?
It's the same thing, I think.
Same thing.
Okay.
Okay, great discussion. Thanks, everybody. I just want to make sure, Commissioner Gault, would you hear much? Are you good?
I'm good. I'm good. I'm fine.
All right, Michelle, we're, we're ready to keep moving.
Okay, so this next action item relates to downtown. And the objective we have is a concentrated effort to support, enhance, celebrate and improve our thriving downtown community. Um, the expectation has the design and construction of City Block, a full TIF implementation. Um, development and implementation of the Entertainment Destination Center that we discussed at the retreat. Um, there was a lot of discussion too at the retreat of how to measure success. And so what we are proposing is a net gain of ten businesses downtown on an annual basis. Uh, celebrate business openings and highlight downtown businesses. So this would be some of the check presentations we do. But how can we elevate that and continue to highlight our downtown businesses and celebrate their openings? And then obtain and maintain a full uh, Main Street accreditation.
Okay, I'll um, I'll just uh, kick off here a little bit with this. I mean, uh, just from an overview standpoint, um, our, our city's downtown is, is critical uh, to, to Paducah. Uh, and uh, we're in, uh, we anticipate uh, the approval of our TIF uh, very, very soon. Um, and I think we've got the, just in the last couple of days, have gotten uh, some information from Wayland on, on the initial design, you know, of the project. Um, you know, that's certainly an important part of downtown. Um, and, and the promotion and the improvement of downtown over the long run. But I would just say that there's also other development going on downtown. Uh, you know, that I'm hearing about, um, and that is actually taking place. If you, if you've driven downtown lately, uh, you've seen that um, the um, uh, oh shoot, the building, um, the outdoor store, um, Hooper's.
Hooper's.
Holy geez. Uh, so um, I know there's somebody developing, you know, the upper floors of the Hooper's building. Um, I, I know there's other, other things going on. And I would just remind everybody that the TIF, uh, you know, the, the performance of the TIF uh, is all about and encompasses all the development, you know, in the blocks that the TIF is included in. So uh, the City Block project is obviously key, uh, you know, because we have to have the twenty million dollars to kick it off. But any other development uh, down there uh, is, it also helps our, our TIF rebates, if you will, uh, without saying it uh, any other way. But just in general, I think there is a feeling on the part of the commission. Uh, you know, we, we've got this obtain and maintain full Main Street accreditation. And uh, I think that, you know, I think our goal, and I don't know if Commissioner Gault would like to say anything here, but I think we want to ramp up uh, over time, uh, our efforts, you know, in this particular area and, and be as meaningful, um, provide as much meaningful support as we possibly can for our downtown merchants. Um, that's kind of what I came away from the strategic planning session uh, with.
We could actually add that on as a, an additional expectation to provide that uh, meaningful uh, support to our downtown merchants. We could add that in there.
And you know, we talked about this a little bit at the, at the session, but how would you define meaningful? I mean, those are the things that I, I have a tendency to get bogged down in. Is that fifty percent participating? Is that eighty percent participating? Um, you know, they're independent business owners and it's a calling card. No question, downtown is a calling card for our community. Um, but how do we do that? That's a difficult.
It, it is difficult and I, I, you know, I, I, I don't have the answers. I mean, I, you know, some businesses want to engage and some, some businesses want to be the Lone Ranger and do their own thing. Um, I, I get that. And uh, that's their prerogative. Um, but I do think if we add meaningful, if we attempt to be more intent, uh, intentional, you know, on what we do to help them and we listen, we listen to them as much as possible. I can't believe that there's not improvements that can be made.
Oh, I totally agree. I totally agree. I was just trying to help not set someone up to fail. Try to find a way for measurable progress.
I just think, I think we need to design that over time and we could, we can agree on some of those measurements in the, in the future. I don't think we have to.
Right.
Uh, I don't think we have to dial in on them all today. But, but I, you know, I wanna, I mean, downtown is important to us. And, and uh, so I, I definitely want to listen to the merchants. I want to engage with the merchants. I want to hear what they have to say. And uh, if they're unhappy, you know, I want to hear why. Uh, those that are happy, I want to, I want to know why. And um, and there's going to be some that don't care, I guess, you know, or, or don't, don't, not that they don't care, but they just have their own idea about the, the way they want to manage their businesses.
Now, when you say support, I think, aren't you talking about how the, the city, what we would do to support them? It's not really, when you talk about, I, I understand, Commissioner Gault, you're saying some are going to participate, some aren't. We're actually talking about what we're going to do to support them, aren't we?
A- and I get that. I understand that. But what, I guess what I'm saying is if you buy advertising, advertising may help the retailer, but is it gonna help like a law firm? You, uh, you know, there, it's so diversified down there and we want to be meaningful and help everyone. It's trying to figure out how to do that in a measurable way where it, it helps benefit downtown. It rises the tide, if you will.
Well, I know that we have a lot of meetings with the Main Street merchants. So that, I mean, I'm sure we can get input from them on, at those meetings. You could do some surveys to get their input of what they want to see. I, I know when we've had certain events, there's been a lot of discussion, some like them, as you said, some don't. So it's, you know, finding the happy medium, aware middle ground of what we can do to, to try to make everybody be more successful. I think that's ultimately our goal.
Right.
Well, we have, Katie's with us. Uh, Katie, if you're still there, you, can you think of any metric we could add in here to kind of help solidify these expectations? You're, you're muted, Katie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so as part of maintaining full Main Street accreditation, we are required to do monthly, quarterly and annual tracking. And we do this based on number of businesses, number of new housing, housing mix, commercial and residential rents, uh, volunteer hours, number of volunteers, number of sponsorships, the list goes on. So we have a lot of data collection that we do. We can do better about communicating that, both to the commission as well as to the public in terms of our progress and using that to be, um, to continue to build on our successful programs and have it be part of a package that benefits the entire district, to celebrate the entire district and to um, to fulfill the mission that it, when you open a business in Paducah, downtown is a good place to do that. There is value there, both in terms of the programs that we offer and the community that you're a part of when you come and you locate your business in downtown.
So Katie, are you saying that we have the metrics now? Uh, we just need to do, we just need to communicate, do a better job of communicating those up and down the line? Um, is that, is that kind of what I heard you say?
Yes, and we always take an approach of, of try, tweak, try again. So our eyes and our ears are open to the merchant community. We love to hear their thoughts. We try to incorporate um, those suggestions into our work programs and building that into um, our larger efforts across all four strategies, whether it's promotions, organization, which is volunteers and doing our events, design aesthetic and maintaining our historic preservation ethic, and then also economic vitality. And that is our, our downtown development grants, our TIF, our opportunity zones, our historic uh, state and federal tax credits and any additional programs that would help support new businesses to come to downtown and to thrive in downtown.
So, so let, let me just um, go back just a little bit. Um, I want to put a business downtown. You said that we have programs. What would be the programs that would push me and encourage me to put my business downtown? What would we be doing, what would the city be doing to help me be successful? Would we be doing some things to get people into my business? I mean, I guess like, my question would be, what are the programs that we already have in place? Is that like the after meals, the meals downtown? Are, are those the programs that you're talking about, referring to?
Commissioner Henderson, I'm talking about direct support for a business to come and locate downtown. So that is through our roof stabilization program, we pay fifty percent of a new roof. That is for the build-out of new business on ground floor space. We pay eleven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in reimbursable expenses for the build, build-out of those spaces. Facades and beautification grants so that people can uh, paint their trim, new signage, new lighting, um, new uh, park benches and, and planters to beautify our streets. It's state and historic, uh, federal, state and federal historic tax credits, which is a direct benefit to um, the redevelopment and preservation of our historic assets. We work with Kentucky Heritage Council, um, as well as some local experts on those programs. Opportunity zones are a direct tax benefit from the federal government um, for those who use capital gains and want to reinvest in underutilized and blighted communities, which downtown is considered from the federal government's perspective. All of those packet, all of those direct benefit programs come and, and help a business locate. And then we have our merchant support programs. So our Open Flags is a direct grant. We provide a merchant welcome packet. We provide marketing and community support. We do monthly merchant meetings to um, hear about ideas and to communicate from a city hall to the community about what is going on and to then receive feedback. We provide coordination services and opportunities to kind of leverage individual businesses, events or promotions and see if we can actually draw um, more people downtown and into those buildings. So our programs are comprehensive. Um, and then with COVID, we did even more to kind of pivot our programming and have it be adaptive to um, the restrictions and the guidelines for healthy at work. So Main Street closed Market House Square in partnership with engineering and parks and the city manager's office to extend sidewalk cafes. We worked with them to do uh, the music in the gazebo. We did curbside parking. Um, we did merchant tutorials about how can your business actually open up a online store within a weekend? How do you tap into the federal programs for direct assistance? We've done all of that work. There's obviously more that we can do um, and continue to build on this cohesive brand that downtown is a good place to do business and you are supported, both from the city's perspective, the state, also because we are part of a state and national Main Street program and part of the merchant community.
I've, I didn't know all of that. Perhaps everyone else did, okay? But uh, I'm, that's, that's what I'm getting at, what are the programs? And I appreciate it.
We're here to learn, we're here to learn, Commissioner Henderson. So um, the only, the only thing, we, and we need to keep moving or we're going to be here till ten o'clock tonight. But uh, but uh, the only thing that I'd like to see, and we can talk about this later, but I, I'd like to see us to do a, um, you know, a full-blown survey, you know, of, of our, of our merchants downtown, you know, and get, you know, feedback uh, from things, you know, how they think things are going, you know, just maybe devise a special survey. Uh, you know, to get some ideas. I think that, that could help us in the future. But um.
We could add that as an expectation.
Yeah, that would, that would be good. Yeah, that would be, that would be great. Katie, thank you very much, okay?
Of course. Thank you.
One thing that's not on here that we just mentioned that probably needs to be somewhere in is opportunity zones. It is part of downtown, but there's a second one too. We don't, I don't want us to lose focus on the benefits of having those two opportunity zones in our community. I think we still need to push for those.
I agree with that, absolutely. Okay, shall we press on?
Uh, so our next item is stormwater. And the objective we have here is to further investigate the implementation of the Stormwater Master Plan. And the expectations are to educate the board on the current Stormwater Master Plan and utility, reassess the timeline assumptions and consider adoption of the plan. Um, this is another potential use of those existing bond proceeds. Um, also talk about the board assessing the feasibility Stormwater Utility Fee and excluding those flood wall costs. We talked about that at the retreat. And then identifying and establishing a community-wide strategy that is supported by local businesses and churches.
I think that was supposed, to me, it was Board of Commissioners to consider this feasibility of a Stormwater Utility Fee. I don't really think it was assessing it. this feasibility of a stormwater utility fee. I don't really think it was assessing it.
That's what, that's what we meant by assess was to
Yeah, that's, that's what it meant.
To consider, we could change that though, to consider.
Absolutely.
Maybe it says the same thing.
Though we could change it.
Yeah, we'll change it.
Do we hit the mark? Are we close? Are we far off?
Yeah, I think, I think, I'm just, you know, I I'll, I'll kick off, you know, talking about stormwater. It's a terribly complex issue. But it is, you know, I'm glad it's part of our, it really has to be part of our, our focus, our strategic plan. Uh, the last commission, you know, went pretty far down the road, you know, in trying to implement a plan and at the last minute, you know, decided not to adopt anything. And, uh, and, and I understand that. But
Back up on that, we were doing some programs. We were implementing some individual projects.
Right. It was just the strand plan, the full-blown plan that, that we kind of, let's say we took a timeout, let's, let's put it, we'll put it that way. In the long run, uh, you know, this community has to have a, a stormwater plan. Um, there's climate change, there's things going on out there that, this is, this is my opinion. Okay, and, and, and the rest of the commissioners may not be synced with me 100%, but, but my opinion is we have to devise a long-term plan for stormwater. And when I say stormwater, it's, it's a, it's a 10, 20, 30, 40, 50-year plan to upgrade the stormwater sys, the stormwater system that we have here in Paducah. And it's terribly complex. And, and I, and I think that educating the Board of Commissioners on the, the master plan uh, and the proposed utility, I think is very important. Uh, Commissioner Wilson went through that process, but Commissioner Gault, Henderson, and Guest did not. Uh, so I think, I think that's something that we need, we need to do. There is definitely, uh, you know, I feel like that we, you know, we've got consider utilization of existing bond proceeds, but again, Jim, I think we should, we should say a portion of existing bond proceeds for identified projects within the plan or other projects that can make an impact.
Okay.
So, um, so I'm, I don't know if, uh, Rick Murphy, are you still on? Is he still on?
He should be.
I believe, I believe he's dropped off.
He probably, he, he dropped off too early.
Okay, he had a shot.
One thing that we didn't really, you, you keep going back to that, and I know we talked about it at the retreat, and I think we tried to capture it when it talks about the reassess the timeline assumptions. Because you keep saying that this is something we're not gonna, you know, solve in 10 years, we gotta be looking long-term on this, but we gotta make continuous, continuous progress. Do you want us to kind of revise how we say that? Are we missing the mark there? Are we close to home?
Where do you point, pointed out where
First bullet point, reassess the timeline assumptions, and you keep talking about, you know, it's a 20, 30, 40-year project.
It's seven o'clock.
I, I think, I, I really think that captures it. I mean, I just think maybe reassess and, and confirm what we think the timeline assumptions are. Um, and really, it's a matter of, you know, when you look at it, and I know all the commissioners that have not gone through this, but, but, you know, the longer you take to implement any kind of stormwater plan that's got significant cost to it, then the less you have to spend each year. And the less you might have to make in a stormwater utility fee or, or ask businesses and churches to share with you. So I think the assumption, uh, of the timeline that you want to, that you want to, to take in order to implement something definitely, you know, is, is important. And so I think, yes, we need to reassess that and, and we, and we need to, we need to come together and, and figure it out, and we're not gonna do this. You know, this is not gonna be done, uh, you know, on a couple of Saturdays. This is gonna take some time.
Yeah, I agree.
Also think we could evaluate what we have done, because there were some things, the sliplining or some of the things that we did do. And then take from there, what are the steps moving forward? Small steps, large steps, and how we would accomplish that.
I mean, we, we have done some things, and it's, it's hard to know, you know, what, you know, what, what we've gotten for that. I mean, we, it's hard to know exactly what the manifestation, you know, of that is, just like it's hard to figure out, you know, for each one of those projects that were in the stormwater plan, you know, really what the positive impact would be on certain, you know, certain areas of the city. So I really think that we have to, we have to do all, we have to do all that work. Um, and we just gotta get down to the nitty-gritty and, and, and try to figure it out. It's not, this, this is not for the faint of heart. So, and I, and Commissioner Wilson, you've been through it before, so I know, um, so.
Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Gault, is this kind of meeting your expectations?
Yes, I was just gonna ask Commissioner Wilson, if, if you simply added in between, assess the feasibility stormwater utility, if you added of a stormwater utility fee, do you think that would capture it?
If we put in a stormwater, what did you say?
No, in, in the third line down, under expectations, on the slide, where you were talking about assess the feasibility stormwater utility fee. If we just simply said assess the feasibility of a stormwater utility fee, so it doesn't appear as if we're, you know, but it still brings it to our mind for a discussion, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Is that kind of what you were getting at?
Yes, I think it should be a discussion, not an action that we've already made our mind up. We have not.
Absolutely.
I, I agree, yeah.
Totally synced on that. Commissioner Henderson, are you good?
I am, I am not in alignment at all. And I just thought I'd say that to liven this thing up a little bit.
Oh, it looks like 10, at least 10 o'clock tonight.
I'm cool.
Oh, so you were kidding. Oh, I thought we
Yeah, I'm in alignment. I just wanted to add a little life to what we're doing.
I like it.
I like it. I'm in alignment.
All right, great. Thank, thank you, Ray. Michelle, we can move on.
Okay, good. Uh, this action item, this one will liven it up for sure, the South Side enhancements. I know that Commissioner Henderson is very passionate about this as the board, as the whole board is. So the objective we've written here is targeted empowerment, engagement, and beautification of South Side neighborhoods. And we have a number of expectations here, um, including identifying a concentrated geographical area, uh, meeting with residents and businesses within those areas to develop a joint vision, uh, creation of a neighborhood steering committee, identifying community financial partners, because I know we had some great partners when we were working in lower town and other neighborhoods. Uh, focus on infrastructures improvements, beautification efforts, demolition, um, you know, explore the creation of an incentive program for businesses and homeowners. And qualified projects could potentially be candidate of bond proceeds.
Okay, so just make sure everybody's aware, and then we can discuss this, but we do have two town hall meetings scheduled for March 4th and March 11th. That is a Thursday evening from 5:00 to 6:30 at Swarre's on the South Side. Um, and we're going to do a press release or a blurp on that. Pam Spencer is going to be, uh, releasing something on that tomorrow. Uh, so everybody's gonna be provided a, um, a PDF, uh, you know, announcing the event so you can send it to people. I think our goal is to, those two meetings, um, would be to listen, listen to residents and business owners on the South Side about what their major concerns are and, and, um, so I'll just, in the, in the interest of full disclosure, first time I've ever run a town hall meeting. So my wife told me earlier today that I should just Google, how do you run a town hall meeting? So I thought that was pretty humorous, but, um, you know, we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to plan effectively so that we give people the opportunity to weigh in. Um, Neil Ward, the owner of Bob's Drive-In, is partnering with us on this initiative. Uh, he's very, uh, you know, he's been a longtime South Side business owner and, um, and is, has a vested interest in making improvements. Uh, so I'll, I'll be quiet and let somebody else talk, but, uh, you know, that, that is, I think, an important first step to listen.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I, I really absolutely am excited about, about these two meetings coming up. I really am. I was thinking about it today, and I was wondering if it would be in order to add one other expectation, and that would be to see if we could provide or help communities start neighborhood watches in certain areas that, you know, you, I don't know if that's acceptable or something that we could do, but it's certainly something that can kind of help folk feel safe uh, in their communities. But I'm, I'm excited about this. I really am. And I, and I think that, uh, on these meetings, that our only goal, uh, should be to just to sit and listen to the people. That's all.
Yeah, we, we could definitely add that in, Commissioner Henderson, we could add that as an expectation. One of the things that the, myself, Michelle, Lindsay kind of kicked around was that first bullet point item, is it, are we talking identify multiple geographical areas or one large concentrated area? What's that look like?
We hadn't, I don't think we decided that, but I know that we did talk about, at least I think we talked about kind of getting out, trying to determine where we would, you know, concentrate our efforts and our energy. But so I don't have an answer as to where that would be, you know, it can't be the whole South Side, but we have to kind of get out, and I'm hoping that maybe somebody could, uh, maybe take me out and just help me uh, know exactly what's what, you know, I was thinking of residential, I think Commissioner Wilson talked about business and obviously both, uh, but we just need to decide where that will be.
I think that's a good point, because you're right. We, we've all have different ideas of what we say when we consider the South Side.
That's right.
Yeah, it's, it's
Ask on the logistics for that meeting. Are you gonna have people sign up in advance? I mean, Swarre's is a pretty big facility.
Well, uh, I had mentioned to the mayor that I thought maybe we would have people sign up. And after I saw the flyer, I suggested the same thing to Sisters Pam Spencer. And she said that Swarre's is a large enough place, even now, they're able to accommodate a great number of people uh, under CDC guidelines. So she thought that we would be good, and she didn't think that people would, you know, actually sign up RSVP. So I told her, I was cool with that.
We, we can kick it around. I mean, I, we, we did, Pam and I talked about asking people to sign up ahead of time, but um, I didn't want to, I didn't want to put up any barriers, somebody at the last minute deciding, oh yeah, there's that meeting at 5:00, I'm gonna go. Um, I mean, we could ask them to, you know, we could say you can sign up before or you can show up at the meeting, but I didn't want to put up any barriers.
Well, I think either way, if you have them sign up before, uh, some folk won't do it, like she said, they're just not gonna do it. But then on the other side of the coin, I didn't want people to come and we have more people that we can accommodate and have to turn people away. I didn't want that to be an issue either.
Right. Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to limit, I mean, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to set it up, you know, in a safe manner with social, people are gonna be required to wear masks, and it's gonna have to be, um, they're gonna have to respect social distancing, and some people won't, won't come, uh, you know, to a meeting like that. Um, but I think, I think a lot of people will. Um, and I think this is an important, an important topic, and, you know, it's an experiment. I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're inviting people to a town hall meeting, so um, I hope, I hope 50, at least 50 people show up. And I hope people listen, and I hope some people talk, and I hope we get a lot of good information out of it.
Well, I plan to get you 50 people there. I got 200 flyers.
You're scaring me, Ray, you're scaring me.
But I, I think, I think, I think you do want, I think the commission does want to hear from the citizens and business owners who live in the South Side. And in order to, to make that happen, we gotta make some personal contact. And one of the things that I wanted to do is to contact and take flyers to some of the pastors and churches that I know are in the midst of in-person worship. You know, we just gotta, gotta get the word out there, if, if we want them to come.
Okay, any other?
Good.
Any, thank, thank you, Ray. Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Uh, any, anybody else have input? Commissioner Gault, you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay. I, I agree with Commissioner Henderson, and, and it will take some, it'll take some work to get people there, but, um, it, it will happen, it's just gonna take some work. But I'm excited about the opportunities.
Okay, we're moving on.
Uh, the next action item is sports with Bluegrass Downs and Stewart Nelson Park identified. And the objective is to partner with McCracken County and the Sports Commission in the design and construction of the outdoor recreational facilities. And so we'd look to formalize the equal partnerships with both financial and participation, uh, consider utilization of the existing bond proceeds so we could make those same language changes that we've made to the other items. Uh, finalize an interlocal agreement, uh, put design and construction of the project and improvements of Stewart Nelson access roads and the city recreational fields.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I go back just one to the last one? Did we not, and maybe I missed it, did we not talk about, uh, some of, uh, some of the bond going to some of the enhancements on the South Side? Is that right, or did I miss that up?
Yes, we did have that as a bullet, you're correct.
Was it on the, on, on the, uh, screen, or did I miss it?
No, I think it was on there, wasn't it?
Okay, all right, I just missed it then. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
It was on there, right, Michelle?
Correct, yes.
Thank you, good.
Okay, one of the things I'd like to, to, to add to this one is, um, uh, anything we do has to get, has to provide proper recognition. Uh, you know, of really what Stewart Nelson Park, uh, the history of Stewart Nelson Park, um, the African-American community, I'm not sure exactly, uh, how we want to do this. Uh, you know, we, we, we need to decide over time, uh, in partnership with the county, but I think we, we have to have that recognition there, so I'd like to add that somehow, uh, as a bullet point.
We can do that. Also, Michelle, we, we need to add Rick Murphy as a key team member in this one too.
Uh, Mr. Art, did you not mention at, at one of our gatherings is that there would be some type of museum? No, I didn't, you didn't say that?
No, not, not a museum, it's a, uh, what's the word? It's a plaza.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's, there's a memorial plaza work is what I've seen in the, the draft, but it's not been designed yet. And when I, uh, when I had a conversation with Mr. Doolittle, I keep reemphasizing that we need to be included sooner rather than later. Since we are gonna be a financial partner on this, we want to make sure we're heavily involved when, when it comes to design.
Okay. Go ahead, Michelle, I'm sorry.
No, please go ahead, Commissioner Henderson, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was, I was No, I was, I was getting ready to make, be messy. That's all.
City manager, do you want to, I think that's what we meant with that language that says participation. Would you like to flush that out more with what you just said?
No, no, you're fine. Because it says equal partnership.
Okay.
So the county has reached out and they are, they are ready to sit down and start talking about this. So I'm not sure exactly how that's, that's gonna play out, but that's a good sign. City manager and I met with the judge and the deputy judge a couple of weeks ago and, and talked about both nine-one-one and this, this, this project. So I think, I think we're really ready to get started on it. I think there's a you know, I sense that there's a, you know, a strong, strong support for, for this outdoor sports park in the community. That's something that I, that I'm, I'm getting feedback from, so.
I think just stay consistent, Michelle, too. If we could put the, consider utilization of a portion of the existing bond proceeds.
Yes, I'll update that language on all of them.
With the inclusion of the, making sure we, we're honoring the historical heritage of the park. Is there anything else that we're, that we're missing here on this one?
Not at this point. I mean, we may, you know, we may uncover some, some things that we want to focus on, but not at this point.
Thank you.
If everybody's good, we're gonna move on.
Just before we go, Mr. Mayor, this, this is a big one. I mean, are we, are we all in alignment? This is what we want to do?
Yep, it's a good, good. So what, what Jim is saying is this could take a significant amount of our bond money. I mean, you know, this could, you know, this could be the, you know, this could be a big one. And I mean, we, we obviously have to decide that down the road is exactly how much and to what degree. But, but this, this is, as Jim said, this is a big one.
Tricia Gault, you're, you're gonna say something?
No, I was just, I, I do think we're all in, in alignment. I, I mean, sometimes it's difficult to define the equal partnerships, but you know, as long as everybody has skin in the game, that's you know, if you hadn't picked up, I'm big on that defining it so we all know where we are. But yeah, I think we're all in agreement and I think we all realize it may take a large portion of that. But you know, we've got lots of things that we want to do and we'll have to just figure out how to deal with that. I mean, Commissioner Wilson, are you, Commissioner Henderson, are you all in agreement?
I'm in agreement with you, absolutely.
The, the money was raised for recreational wellness type facilities. And so since we have changed in the direction on that, then this is something that does fit with me, with the initial reason for the money.
I agree.
Let's move on.
All right, let's move on.
So this action item is the remote workers incentive program. And this is create and implement an effective incentive program. So you know, this will be new, so we'll have to, and work has, you know, started all this. I know the mayor has sent us some information and we've passed it along to the appropriate people. But identifying and evaluating effective programs, we're really gonna have to establish what the rules and procedures and funding look like for that program. We'd like to present a proposal to the board within sixty days and then move into implementing, marketing and promoting the program and evaluate it at the twelve-month mark. Is how we've captured that discussion.
Okay. So this was, you know, we focused on this. I mean, this, this is a program that we can manage. You know, the amount of, we can manage them, we can manage the, the amount of money that we throw at it. And we can make sure that we have teeth in the program that, that we get a benefit for the amount of money that we invest in it, if we implement it correctly. But I do think time is, is of the essence on this. If we are going to do something, we need, we need to hit that sixty-day mark for sure. And we need to come out of the, out of the blocks, ready to do something. You know, by, I mean, it's February twenty-third, so you know, we need to be able to implement something at a May meeting. Because the country is coming out of, is going to be coming out of, of COVID. You know, over the last, latter six months of this year is, is my prediction. And, and so I think focus is gonna change. But at the same time, I think remote workers is still a big thing. I think people are still going to be working from home more now than ever, even after COVID. And, and so I think it's, it's a proactive step to try to promote our community to people and get them to move here.
So this is probably a tactic instead of, you know, an expectation. But I would really like to see Catherine and Ty or any of us to talk to, I mean, I could name some people right now that have done, have relocated here, to talk to them to find out what brought them here. And then I'd really like to offer the Parduka Young Professionals a survey with them to see what would cause them to think about if they didn't live here, to move here.
We could add-
Recruitment program, I'd like to see us, I mean, I think some of our young professionals could help recruit some of their friends to move here. So maybe that's part of the marketing and promote the program. So I'm probably talking about tactics and getting into the weeds, but boy, that's on my mind for this program.
No, I think you're on the money and we'll, we'll capture that, make sure we, we're on point with that. And I do like that we kind of talked about a little bit deals, potentially establishing a referral program. Yeah, we could add that too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do we have alignment on this one?
Yes, I think so.
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's move. Let's keep going.
Okay, next we have the communications enhancement. And the objective is to effectively reach all segments of our community. There are a lot of expectations here, and so I won't read all of these individually. This work has already started and we wanted to capture it here because it's such a passion for this board. So do you want me to read through all the expectations or does this commission feel like they have a, a handle on this piece?
I mean, I got it.
Yeah, I don't think we, Michelle, I don't think we need to, to run through it. You know, Pam and, and whoever has collaborated with her have presented, you know, an initial draft. And I, I would like to sit down and kind of walk through that. And I've asked Commissioner Wilson to, to sit in with me so that we can, you know, just flush out all these things and understand what you guys are saying in the draft. And, and you do, just make sure it's hitting the mark. And, and Commissioner Gault, Commissioner Henderson, and of course Commissioner Guest, do you guys have input on, on the plan or concerns or, you know, anything, you know, I'm, we can schedule a call and get, get your input. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it yet.
I've, I've had a chance and I'm cool for right now.
Okay.
I've looked at it as well and I thought it was very detailed and well done, so I'm cool. I'm fine with it.
Okay. So I, I, I mean, I sent an email out, but I really appreciate, you know, the work and effort that Pam has put into this. And Jim and Michelle, anybody else that's, which worked with her. And so I think, I think we're on to something.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, we'll keep moving. We have four more, three or four. City facilities, so this is implement action items identified in the facilities maintenance plan. So we want to budget for those projects on an annual basis. We would like to, I guess we put establish an actual city facilities improvement plan, similar to the fleet. And I know Chief Kyle kind of set us up for that here because that is a very well-run program. So we'd like to explore a program similar to that for our facilities. And then this, we would also consider the utilization of existing, existing bond proceeds for the projects and we'll change that language as, as the others.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is something that we need to identify our greatest needs. We're gonna have to figure out, we can't, you know, we can't just build buildings and not, you know, not improve them over time. We, we absolutely have to establish some sort of facilities maintenance plan. And because we have these bond proceeds right now, it does make sense to consider the use of some of those proceeds for, for some projects. So throw it out there. And I, I'm sure there's, I mean, there is a facilities maintenance plan, you know, that was out there, that is out there. And so I'm looking forward to, you know, hearing, is Chris and John gonna lead this effort? Jim, I mean, they're-
It's, it's, we're really rely upon Chris. He's, he's in charge of our facilities, but also Rick will play a part and then John will help us with the financial side.
Okay.
I'm good.
You too.
Everybody good?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay, so this is similar to facilities, but it is developing a plan for the Parks Building and Fire Station Number Four. So we want to identify a replacement or relocation plan for Fire Station Four and the Parks and Recreation Facility. So we talk about soliciting, designing, construction estimates as well as identifying community needs and completing the site selection process. We also want to seek community input and stakeholder engagement.
This would also have to have a finance component to it, is how we would pay for it.
That's true.
Yeah.
Very true.
Are we on point here? We missed the mark? Are we good to go?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think we need to figure out the timeline for what we want to do with these two challenges that we have, these two, these two buildings. And without getting into a lot of detail, there's, you know, there's definitely, there's definitely cost savings, you know, available to us, you know, particularly, I think, with the Parks Building. And so, I mean, this is, these are our highest priorities, so I agree. Everybody good? Ready to move on?
Okay. Okay. So this action item is related to housing and our objective is the continued investment in the improvement of our housing stock. So we want to investigate residential housing development incentives, investigate financial institution partnerships, and then evaluate and explore new neighborhood revitalization strategies.
Two things that come to mind on this one that perhaps we should have talked about earlier is, I mean, we could identify some developers actually to try to bring in to partner with us, which would maybe be the financial institution partnership, but it's really totally different. The developers would come in and maybe develop a neighborhood. And then the other one is that we've heard a lot about in the last week or so, I have more, or maybe all of y'all have been on it. Is there transitional housing? I mean, I think here we're talking about housing at different economic levels for all, for everyone, you know, is transitional housing some, something that we should include in here? So those are two totally different topics that I think we may should consider.
So I'll just say, first of all, I think it's a great idea to identify developers, you know, who we might partner with. I think that's, that could be an action item. I do think, you know, without getting into a long discussion about it, you know, there is a lot of, there's a lot of buzz in the community about, about our homeless issue. And I did have a, I did have a call with the Salvation Army out of Louisville about the possibility of them helping with some initiative. One of the first things that they would want to do and one of the first things I think anybody would really want to do is really determine what is our, what is our, what is our need? You know, what is our need, you know, I'm speaking of homeless now in general. For our homeless population, what is the specific need? So I think we have to do more homework with that. But I've been in a lot of discussions, calls, I'm in a, I'm on a monthly call with a group of people who are working on the, on the issue. So I think, I say all that to say, I think this is, we could add this as a bullet point.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing that information too, Mayor. I think that's good for our community to know. I mean, there are several organizations right now that address that, Parduka Cooperative Ministry, River City Mission, Community Kitchen. So helping to identify how, how that's gonna be handled, I think is important.
Yeah, and you know, there's, there's just a lot of people that are, that are concerned about it. You know, I met with Michelson's from Community Kitchen. You know, there's others in the community. You mentioned Parduka Cooperative. Their, their program is called Fresh Start. I'm, I'm planning on getting together with, you know, with them and learning more about what they do. So there's no quick fix here. If we could have a short-term goal of, of having some sort of temporary, and I'll emphasize temporary solution by, by the time the weather changes next year, you know, like which, which is about six months out. I think that would be a good reasonable goal to have. But there is, there's a lot of work to be done. So I do want the community to know that, that we're concerned about it and that we are gonna work on it, so. Anything else from anyone?
Commissioner Gault, were you gonna add something?
I'm sorry?
Were you going to add something to this item or the expectations?
I was thinking about it when Commissioner Wilson talked about developers, about that being, is that a strategy? You know, or can we bullet point some of those things maybe as strategies? I was just thinking that through and I probably was about to think out loud and maybe I shouldn't always do that.
One of my terrible habits. Talking-
It's okay.
Just one more tidbit of information. I'm, I'm actually working with Sharon Poet who runs Midtown Alliance. I think we're actually, I think it's on the calendar for me for tomorrow afternoon. So I'm spending a couple of hours touring the city, working with her, looking at some of the work that they've done. And so that's on the agenda.
I'm glad you mentioned that because wasn't that one of our items on this was that next step for her that she's been trying to get certified on?
Yep.
With the CDC, the Community Development Corporation?
Yes, and that's not on here. And I think if we really want to make sure that that happens, we should probably add it, in my opinion.
That's probably true. We should.
Agreed, agreed.
There's three new for this one.
It's all right. Thank you for your feedback.
No, the, they're getting worse. I mean, they're getting more sparse as we go along. You know, it's like, like you guys ran out of Oompa, you know, you just ran out of ideas as we get-
That four, that four hours on that Saturday morning, everybody gets tired.
Our notes get smaller.
Your feedback, this is awesome.
This is great. I think we're on our last one, if I can move on. This is great. I think we're on our last one, if I can move on. Okay, so we have annexation, and we have the objective of aggressively, aggressively annexing adjacent properties into city corporate bounty, boundaries. The expectations would be to develop a short-term and long-range annexation plan with our community partners, investigate and implement annexation incentive program, annually budget for the cost of annexations. And then we did try and define this a little bit more and set a goal of annexing a minimum of six parcels of property into the city annually.
Is that aggressive enough, Commissioner Wilson, or are you thinking more?
I'm good with what everybody else says. I mean, I, I will say, when I, we talk about it, if you, if there's a piece of land that's surrounded by the city, and it's not, hasn't been annexed in, we should be looking into that. I mean, everything around it is. So yes, there probably are plenty of parcels like that that we aren't even aware of.
I think six is totally doable. I think we could get a little bit more aggressive than six. I think we'll have five here, probably the first six months of this commission. So, I mean, but I want to make sure it's, it's a legitimate goal.
And I think we should explain, you know, maybe that we're, you know, we're, we're really not talking about specifically here residential, right, Commissioner Wilson?
No, it is not residential. It is more for business development.
Right. And so, you know...
Commercial development, industrial development?
Absolutely. Properties that would be right, would be ready for the city, they probably, if they're going to be developed, are going to want to be inside the city for various reasons. So it's that type. It's just not always waiting, it's looking to see what makes sense.
Yeah, I like that. So not reactive, proactive.
That's what I was thinking, is we could include, you know, proactive language in here.
Because we have been reactive. You're right.
And maybe that's the word instead of aggressively, maybe it's more proactively annex adjacent properties. And that probably makes better sense.
I like that, yep.
It's a little bit softer.
Okay, I think we're good.
Got it. So we will incorporate these changes. One thing I did want to mention is that we are going to work with the communications manager and the key team members to come up with communication plans for each of these items. So that's a kind of new piece that we're, we're folding in here, but we want to make sure that we have robust communication plan for all of these items, since they're the board's highest priorities.
Our next steps, but then will be to bring this back for approval. We're hoping to do that next, the first meeting in March, so we can hit the ground running, because we have a few of our clocks are ticking on us.
Yes.
Okay, Michelle, thank you very much for putting that together. It's excellent.
Well, thank you, and I had a lot of help from Lindsey Parrish and the communications manager too. So I would be remiss if I did not thank them as well.
Well, thank you, Pam, and thank you, Lindsey. Okay, I need to get, get going here, sorry. So, City Manager, any, any, we're getting, we're getting ready to go into executive session, but before we do that, I want to make sure that, that if anybody has any comments. City Manager, any comments?
I just have one, just some good, bit of good news. We've had, we had to close down our basketball courts at our public parks almost a year ago, and March 1st, we're slated to get the rims back up and get the gate unlocked with some prescriptive basketball rules, you know, hoping that people, people abide by and play with restrictions. But we're trying to get the recreational facilities open so people can enjoy the outdoors.
Jim, on that, are, are some of the other things that we closed last summer, would, are we looking at how we might be able to open those this summer?
Everything's open except for basketball.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about this summer for an Noble Park Pool and for summer camps, things that we did not have last summer.
We're, we're having those conversations.
Are we looking at how we might be able to do those this summer?
Yes, we are. Yeah, we're looking at what that might look like for the pool, what that looks like for staffing the pool. And also, we've had, we've talked internally about getting the spray grounds opened up earlier, you know, just to make sure it's available and stay along, open longer. But yeah, Amy and I have been talking about those items. We're not ready to announce anything for today yet, but we're working hard.
Okay, that's good to know. Any commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Wilson, Henderson, Gault? Okay, I don't have any comments. I made them all at the beginning of the meeting, so... So we are going to go into executive session. City Clerk? Sorry, Stephen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
City Clerk, would you please read that?
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics, proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS 61.8101C.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, City Clerk?
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.